Do I just say?
Have two slot in the present. Follow that. The signatures? Not three, two. I know. I know. I would like two people there. I know.
I mean, the dispute of deadlines, we filed five ones, especially if they were actually first. They were all what happened to that.
Needs to have a motion on it.
Have a motion on that, and see if it's destroyed or whatever.
My motion is to have the planning board validate the signatures. And if there are not there to make it. Enough signatures to put it on the ballot. Then that's the way it will go.
All those in favor?
Can we? And can we check with whomever the gods it be?
What?
Just for, to see if we're within the realm of what we need to be doing.
I'm kind of worried, it's gonna be too late.
Yeah.
What is it gonna accomplish?
Yeah.
It's a petition.
Yeah.
If a petition is valid, it's valid. If it is, it will go on the ballot. If it isn't, it's not going to.
And it still won't be part of our public hearing, because we have to put public hearing.
Public hearing.
Which is the deadline you're talking about? The forty-five days?
Before election?
Before election.
Forty-five days before election.
For what?
That we have to vote to have it on the ballot.
And put it on the ballot.
Then we have to have the public hearing.
But that was something that was muddied before, because is that a?
That's land use ordinance.
Land use ordinance only, or does that?
Regular ones, that doesn't obtain.
But it's thirty days, it's either thirty or forty-five, right?
For a?
If it's not land use, it's a thirty day.
And it's on the citizen's only.
Yeah, that's right.
Public hearing is what you're talking about?
No.
We have to vote to put it on the ballot.
Oh, I think it's.
And that has to be done, either thirty or forty-five days.
I don't believe so.
Statute section twenty-five, fifty-eight, or whatever, and that's general, not land use. That's petition.
Right.
Boy, I don't have it off the top of my head.
It's in the manual.
It's in the manual, and I bought this.
Citizen petition statute, so one year thirty.
Yeah.
You have to have a ballot available for voting on that thirty days prior.
Correct.
But it's just blank. If you don't know what's gonna be on the ballot, the warrant has to be done with that on it. Seven days prior to the meeting.
So you're saying that we don't actually have to make a vote? On this? You vote, they have to vote.
You can vote to accept it. And then it is validated by the clerk. If there's not enough signatures valid on there, it stops right there.
You can't have a vote without the selectman's warrant. They've gotta put a warrant out.
There'll be a warrant.
You've gotta vote to do that.
But that's what you did, that's, I remember what we did when you brought that one in, Paula. You gave it to me. I signed that I had accepted it. I gave it to Kathy. Kathy validated all of this stuff, and then we put it on the ballot. You know? Whatever. Yes.
We voted to accept it. We put it on the warrant, put a warrant. Make a warrant for the.
I mean, because that one had a land, a land use.
Yes, correct.
It came under two statutes.
Right.
The citizen petition and the land use.
I mean, my thought tonight was just to accept it and have the signatures validated. I didn't know we needed to do this stuff. That's what I'm looking for, but of course, I'm not gonna be able to find it every year while I'm on the.
I have it here, because I took it specifically out, because I don't have it cataloged.
Well, it doesn't really matter now, because we're running it for five days anyway.
Yep.
And we've already voted on it.
And it's been voted on.
Okay, alright.
Forty-five days is who, doesn't it?
Forty-five days is Friday, is Friday. Alright. Moving on. Planning board. Minutes. Referendums questions. Nice to have the planning board here.
This is a final copy of the August minutes that they were just approving. Information on, anybody has a question? If you're free to ask, and if they're on the ballot, they'll stop me. And then after that, we do have, the plan board has four questions, doubt questions. Presented. Eric, do you wanna?
Basically, those four questions were questions that came up during the discussion regarding the land use ordinance that we approved for July. So, what we did is, one of the things up on there was for Woodchuck Hill, so we'd actually voted on that at the meeting, and somehow or another, just it just didn't get that into the ordinance after we voted on it as a board. So, I promised that that'll be on there for November, so I'm delivering on that. Paula had brought up, she said it wasn't clear regarding the marijuana and drug treatment facilities, that it had to get an operational permit first. So, I just cleaned that language up to make sure that it was, you know, clear. And Bruce had brought up that issue with the nun, or.
With the definition that people said wasn't in the rules, I'm just adding that definition for clarity.
Yeah, for the WEF off, WEF on.
No, WEF on.
Yeah, I'm sorry, right, right. It was a wind energy facility definition that Bruce had put in there, set right in front of you.
Okay.
So those are like the four things that we put on there, and they're four valid questions, and I think the, you know, planning board would recommend vote yes on all four of them.
Okay.
Because question four needs to be written to, to say, show the town a question. Because it just says wind energy facility only, the sound contributed only, but the wind energy facility is excluding all other ambient sound.
Town vote.
And you can, where can you?
Debbie, can you just take your, and then you can adjust your minimum support or your motion for, I think.
Yep. To accept. The definition. It's on the right end. Read it out, please. Should the, should the town vote to accept the definition as written? Then they can read out, that'll be first, in front of everything. Wind energy facility only, the sound contributed only by the wind energy facility excluding all other ambient sound. I think you should probably follow the same language on the others, where it says, should the question, land use ordinance article such and such be amended to? Include the following definition. What article is that?
Article eighteen, right, that's what the definitions are.
Article eighteen.
Sorry, that got brought in the night of the meeting, so I didn't get quite as much of it going through.
Okay. It just says to be, to include the following definition.
Okay, and I think the two, the papers that we have stapled together, have put together with.
One was just with all four questions, so it's one now. Kind of, maybe it looked a little busy, so we decided to break it up into two, and just give examples to you guys to see which you prefer.
Ignore that box, because it's on the watermark for some reason.
That'll be out of there. Eddie, comment on either one?
I wasn't.
That's the only comment I had. Somebody pointing to six. Public hearing.
You can do that. So, one, one of the.
My page.
Do we need to vote on them? Yeah, the questions should be voted on, but.
I don't think the format's gonna go together today, or do we?
No, I'm asking, do we need to vote to get these on the ballot?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, yes, we do, yeah.
I make a motion that we put these four questions, refer in the ballot, with the number four being amended to what we talked about earlier.
All those in favor?
Now, I make a motion to accept the public hearings.
Second Wednesday of October will be green.
Second Wednesday?
Yeah, well.
How long is it due?
Right, because the first Wednesday might get pushed around a little bit because of the school board meetings, stuff like that. There's, I gotta talk with Rusty a little bit about where that is. Because I think you'll probably get that meeting too, but I think.
First Wednesday.
Right, excuse me?
The first Wednesday.
First Wednesday, right, okay.
But that's your place anymore.
Right, and I was trying to, you know, obviously, I wanna be there for that, so we might be pushing the planning board to second Wednesday for a little while. So anyway, but so, we can definitely have a meeting, I'm guaranteeing there'll be a meeting the second Wednesday, so we can have the select board hearing and the planning board hearing as we're supposed to have, you know, simultaneously. I don't think that there's gonna be a lot of controversy regarding these four amendments.
It's October eighth.
I guess, whatever the date is.
And do we only need one?
October eighth, seeing all paper, everybody?
Yep. Following the planning board meeting. Is it following, or?
Well, it'll be at the same time, the planning board, unless somebody brings in an application or whatever between now and then, I haven't heard anything on the street.
We'll just post six P M.
So, if that's the hearing, then we have to get a notice in the paper, because it needs to be thirteen days before the public hearing. That's, yeah.
If you wanna be safe, you could probably say it could be at six thirty.
Okay, that sounds better, so you can do some business.
Should be in the paper by next Thursday, at least, the twenty-fourth or twenty-fifth, to cover us.
Alright, so my motion is we will have a public hearing October eighth at six thirty. Make sure it gets posted in the paper and boards and.
Second motion, all those in favor?
I don't think anyone will vote about that. It probably just didn't need to be a motion, it was just a ballot first. This public hearing is gonna cover the results, the windy score.
Yeah.
Okay, would that be?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Select board, planning board.
Yep.
Those are enough signatures. But we still gotta have a hearing.
Right, yeah, right. Anything else on the planning board? This, we'll talk about, notice that's in the thing later, do you wanna talk about it now?
That's a good one, go later.
Okay, alright, alright, let's move along here. No planning board appeals, executive sessions not applicable, CEO report. Wake him up, somebody wake him up.
I'm awake. I got nothing in my head.
You got nothing?
No.
Okay, alright, he's that way.
I'll make a motion, we accept Rex's.
Is nothing report?
Well, you have some stuff on it.
I didn't get that, I didn't get that, so, to me, it's not nothing.
I'll make a motion, we accept Rex's report.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Carla's, um, printable computer fried, so that's why we have a handwritten report this month, she apologized. I'll make a motion, we accept Carla's report and please remind her.
Sorry.
All those in favor?
Well, we're just.
Sorry.
Orson, in Orson, okay, I was wondering why it's such high miles now, they have people into.
Oh, she does, they actually have land.
Yep.
She tries to be really good about her miles, you know, like, oh, there's nothing you can give up.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
She tries, she does a lot, I find, if she can. Tries to get things settled, I hope, she actually has to drive out, so that's good.
And sometimes, well, like, oh, yeah. Sometimes she goes to Ellsworth, so that might be, usually she breaks her.
Yeah, she'll write it in if she's going to the Shell.
Any other discussion? We have a vote, all those in favor? That's, that sign of coffee? Okay, Edmonton Fire, we don't have, how about the S A D?
This is the first meeting of the A C O P committees.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm not sure, I mean, I know he works out of town, he's talking about really long days, so.
Wanna give us a little, are you on one of those committees, or?
I am, I'm on the staffing, and so our major goal right now is we're compiling information about like what the state recommendations are for classroom size, because that's kind of our goal, is to figure out what our optimum class size will need. And then once we know that, we can look at the numbers and figure out how many people we need, and then hopefully figure out what the staffing situation will look like. So, at this point, we really haven't had a lot of good discussion, we're just basically lining up our goals and getting the information compiled. So, I'm sure Eric can talk to you about the long-term planning.
Yeah, so, long-term planning of facilities, and basically, you know, just insert the work staffing studies and compiling data with work facilities, and that's pretty much the exact same thing we did the other night. So, hopefully, you know, I just kinda hope we have another meeting before the next meeting and stuff like that, but have both committees here to do their thing.
It doesn't seem possible that we can get a really good picture and a good, you know, conclusion in just three meetings, because we have September, October, November, we need to have something by December.
Right.
So, that seems, right, one, one meeting a month is not gonna be enough, but it is what it is.
Right.
And I think Nicole's on the transportation committee, so between the three of us, we should have a pretty good handle on it. But there's no, there is no clipped in person on the transportation committee, so, might be kind of nice if somebody wanted to do that.
Yeah.
Because that's, you know, that's what they cost, that transportation is a huge cost on our budget.
Any volunteers? That's a hard thing to, I wish we had home parents with children involved, that's a happy, oh, they're busy, they're busy. But I wanna thank both of you, I appreciate what you're doing, and keeping us posted and updated.
In the past, it's, we haven't had.
Okay, roadside mowing is done. And as, do you wanna have Mike come and grade?
Yeah, as, on roadside mowing, as we get Jake Hurley, we cut over the brush, because it's growing fast, and we get it back first, like, second time, I'm gonna, we'll be able to move it probably ten to twelve feet, if the guy doesn't, but most of the rules are already in the check.
Okay. Building use, pressure report.
Happy monthly reports, I wasn't able to do the non-geopolises, I'm getting that error report again. I don't know why, it comes and goes, it's been a real. But anyways, when I can print them, I'll get them to you guys. The next is a cyber liability, and this is from Maine Municipal, and also there's a policy that they're showing the chairman of other towns, this is a sample, and I thought, well, you guys are starting to work on policies, this might be a good introduction for the cybering bullies out there. As everybody knows, we was attacked, our email account. So, M M A was really quick, and this is relatively new, and I think Julie can help with this too, because I think her agency is getting involved with the cyber liability coverage. I have a questionnaire in front of me, which I have to answer, which is Judy Door from Maine Municipal, who is the risk pool, has been wonderful. So they're really new, we're not sure what it's gonna cost, if there is gonna be, of course, there's gonna be a cost, but they don't even know yet. They're, I think they're gonna use town of Clifton as a model town for being attacked, so, when I get this completed with your permission, I'll complete the application. There's a lot of questions, basically, some of the, any copies for you guys?
Yeah, we can drop them.
I had some direction from her, like six and seven, she said was really tricky, that a lot, a few towns that have applied or signed on the application, they didn't answer this correctly, because they wasn't really sure about this entity, why a policy exists within the applicant's coverage. They really want us to say yes, because they're hoping that we will have a policy in place. If we said no, they need to, you know, kick this out.
Kick you out of the service, oh, okay.
Yeah, until we had proper things taken care of as a policy for one. Appropriate use of network resources and the internet, and appropriate use of email. Number seven, does the applicant utilize a problem risk management process or procedures, and they want us to say yes. User and password management for current employees and access restriction for prior employees. They're hoping that if any prior employees that we got rid of their passwords, and of course, we have antivirus software on our computers and mission local servers, that we have done. And I just had Sean from Slap Systems, he was in last week and went through to make sure, and you would not believe, one computer was, had been attacked, there was so many of those pages and pages that he had to wipe out, and.
One of our town ones, like yours or Kathy's, or the, wow.
Yeah, some things he had never even heard of, I have the copy of, because I have no idea what it all means, but in tech world, you can read that stuff, but, so he, he got some old protection, and I think he charged the town seventy-seven dollars to come out and do that for us. We only run it, we, yeah, we have extra malware on it, so we can run it weekly.
So, what does this do?
Well.
Do they have some kind of super duper guarantee that we're not gonna get hacked into again, and stuff like this?
Pay you, yeah, to recover.
Yes. Where are you going?
Going home.
Oh, I thought you had something to say, thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm feeling cyber liability coverage, I guess that's what the, what the coverage would do, and I don't sell it, so you can actually call the office and talk to somebody that don't sell it, but it would help, it would pay you to get your dad back, get your, if you. If somebody, one of our clients', customers', credit card, we got, which we don't have credit cards, so that would be a problem, but it would help reimburse that, and you don't like that.
Yeah, there's different coverages, it's so new to them, they're just, it's still.
The insurance world too, and Travelers is one of the companies that is selling a cyber policy, it's really good.
The day we was attacked, they were, they all met that same day already, just on this for the first time, so, then they got our emails, and like, oh my gosh, Clifton's been attacked.
So, I presented the impression it was just one of those email things, but they got through to your, like, billings and?
No, no, no.
No, it didn't get the trio.
Yeah, trio is very protective, I immediately called them, and they said that it would be very, very, very difficult, they didn't think anybody could possibly get through.
So what kind of sensitive data did we have out there?
Nothing, not really. You know, our, I was gonna say email address. Yeah, your email address.
Anybody's name and email address.
Sorry. Like all our mail.
They called them, stack, like, calling all these people.
Was it AOL? Yeah. When I talked to Sean, Sean actually comes in our office too, he said AOL is the most hacked. We've been so fortunate though, that's been our address, you know? And probably, there isn't too many that isn't.
It's Gmail and you better?
There's one call from a trail that you can pay for, it's pretty, pretty, pretty secure.
Well, what about the net, like, whatever internet provider you have here, because you got an email account with that, that would be safer?
Yeah, I think, I'm gonna talk to Fairpoint, I just quickly went with Gmail, because it was free to get us back up and run us, we can communicate.
Right.
You know? Got our internet's with Fairpoint, yes. We should have emails already available to use.
I have Fairpoint.
Right. Pretty much, yeah. Right. There's so many things, right, for us, yeah, and I'm, I'm gonna do that, so.
It'd probably be better than Gmail, it's on staff.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. More user friendly, yeah. Gmail. I do, I hope, and, but anyways, it's something for us to, I mean, it doesn't hurt for us to send an, you know, application just to see, I don't know. We need all this insurance, you could be insured for. Send us a question. Send us a question.
My understanding of that is, the application you should make out until you adopt.
Right, you have to do a policy, that's what I was.
I think that's an ordinance, not a policy, it has to be an ordinance adopted by the town.
I sense that.
Is what I would propose.
Now, why would that be?
It's just an acceptable use policy.
Because it's an administrative rule that only impacts the employees, so it has nothing to do with the rest of us.
So it's acceptable use policy.
You're smart, you're the one smart.
This is just a policy.
And it's something we should have, we probably should have always had a policy, but, you know. You know, I mean, this is just for us to look at, and I know we're gonna have some workshops coming up, so we can actually probably make it a little.
I guess, go idea.
Yeah.
Alright, I'll make a motion that we start working on. The unacceptable use policy. That's what they call it. Ace policy, and then, once we get done that, then go on to the M M A. To get quotes, Warren, to get quotes. I'll second that.
All those in favor? And you wanna also connect with Fairpoint and see?
Yes.
What we can do for that as well.
It was a lot of work, I had, almost two weeks on.
Plus with thousands that were sent to your nephew or whoever was it that was so sick in Beirut or something.
Not even that, I don't wanna go there, but just the phone calls from the generous people that were caring, M M A, I don't know how many people from Maine Municipal, the legal, they were checking on us. Then the deal with the tax from AOL, which they did recover, every email address we had, which I was so thankful, but then they dropped us, because they knew we were free, so, we lost that connection there. So. It worked for eight years, I'm in here. So anyways, that's when I jumped on Gmail real quick, so, then I just kinda took a break for a week, so, you know, we've been, the tech world.
The other thing that I wanted to bring up too, when Kathy and I went to that freedom of.
Ask.
Ask, ses, at, whatever that is.
Vote.
There was a huge component of people that work in town government to have an email address that is directed by the town, and not use your personal email address. I know you created one that's just town business only, but I spoke to Nancy about it, because Nancy and myself, you use your insurance company. But they spent a long time talking about if ever any computers were pulled in, it would be your personal computer or the computer that you use that may have anything and everything on it. So, I, we talked about it, because I want to change and have mine listed under the town, and you said you did as well, and if you two are okay with where you're at for information.
I have separate email address for everything I do with conservation.
Yeah.
Okay. So you mean the town creates your own, create one?
Well, like the planning board did, you know.
Just have a separate one, yeah, if you got creative information requested, everything in your inbox is now subject to public scrutiny.
That's right.
So if you wanna protect, like, your private life from your public life, then you should have to.
Yeah, and that's what one of these attorneys said, that a judge in some particular town had requested a laptop computer that, you know, had all of their pictures and contacts and, you know.
Didn't I create those accounts for you, I sent you that information? I created, I thought I created support accounts.
I don't, not for us, you said you were.
He started.
I, I did, I sent, I used it to, you or to Debbie?
I think that was AOL, so you don't have to do that, because if we go with.
If we go with.
Debbie told me you asked it to be done, so I did.
No, you said that you were going to, but it was a busy weekend. No, you said to me that you were going to, but it was a busy weekend, you were going to something, 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 so.
Well, I can.
It'll get you.
Last, completely.
Last resolved, the Fairpoint or whatever our carrier's going to be, and then we'll do that, but let's conclude us on that. What else you got there?
Oh, signs next. I talked a little bit to Stephanie, I think it was the one in the office, when I had this brainstorm, and I think I talked to Eric too, about the historic sign, and having it placed inside where we kind of bought outside, it was going to be, you know, by the flagpole, you know, have it preserved. And Eric and I talked, that maybe we can get some donations to have that done, and put it out there, and, you know, we do have a quote here, so I don't know if you still want to do that.
Quote from?
To have it preserved and installed outside.
Who was that from?
The lady that did the sign.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Infinite signs.
How much was that quote?
Total is like one-seventy-five, the clear coat and preserve the condition, and one-eighty-two, two painted posts and install the old sign.
Right, so kind of they redo the whole sign, it's like less than four hundred bucks, right?
Well, they're not going to actually redo it, just kind of re-preserve the special stuff on it, clear coat and stuff, we like to keep it as it is.
I mean, I'd kick in, you know, probably a hundred dollars for that, and I'm sure we could probably have a bake sale or whatever, get some stuff together for it.
What was it for, the project?
The, the old.
The one remaining old Clifton town sign that we have, that she had on the slide, we have one, so it's here.
I read last month to put it on the log.
We did, we did.
We're bringing, I'm bringing it back, because we, not many people come in this room to see it, you know.
One concern I have is that it's going to get stolen.
I think it is.
Yeah, I think in here it's safe, and it's not going to get weathered, and it would forever be.
Well, vandalism is an issue, I mean, certainly.
People love signs.
I think the part about doing it and keeping it outside was to have it totally repainted and bring it back to its original colors and makings, and that was like eighteen hundred dollars to do that, plus post it and put it up, so.
My concern about doing this is that, spend the money to do this, and you put it out there, in a few years you're going to do it, you have to do it again, because it's not going to last, and is somebody going to take the, get that, or is it going to go in the district? Right, because it's put off and it's.
I make a motion that the sign was up where we had it last meeting up there, and.
You don't need to vote again, though, you already voted.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, it's kind of. But regarding signs, we did have this quote, they wanted me to get some other quotes, they're not coming in very fast, Maine Sign is working on some signs too, I'll have pictures, quotes for the three, like, the town entering and leaving, so I mean, this is still tabled. Check with DaVinci, white sign.
White signs.
White sign doesn't, they don't do that type of sign, check with DaVinci signs.
And what kind of signs are you looking for? These are the ones for the roads.
We would have replaced the one that, the one that was installed.
Something says entering, book the.
Yeah, and we, thank you for coming visiting or something.
Who did you send me to for my banner, was it that?
White sign.
Yeah.
He's done some town, so, DaVinci and, what's his name? You said white, no. Karen. Karen, Karen's sign, that's the other one. CA? CA, Karen. Oh, so Amanda. I talked to DOT yesterday.
Oh, I'm, I'm just confused on, white sign won't make them?
Not that, with those pictures on it, like, we were thinking something more decorative to replace.
They have a full-scale printer now.
I just talked to them, they said they don't do that type of signs. I called them first, actually, because I do all my road signs.
Yeah.
Yeah.
They did this sign, didn't they?
Yeah.
Yeah, but this is more decorative, it's, you know, what's, kind of replacing what's down, the old one, the star one.
So, do we need that?
I don't know, it's a.
A fancier, schmancier sign?
I did talk with DOT, so they did run the roads yesterday to make sure our signs at town lines, signs are visible, so they took pictures, and I have pictures of them, they're all in great shape, so, I mean, we are covered that way as far as nine-one-one, seeing our signs, and, so, this is up to you guys, do you want to replace, you know, add some other ones, or?
How, how, I'm, I'm not sure how much of a picture you're putting, you know, on it, how do they quote it not knowing what picture they're doing?
Well, we kind of went with a horse.
Okay, so we gave them the same picture and said, you redid this?
Yeah.
Okay.
And incorporated eighteen forty-eight, have that down below. And the picture's optional, I mean, we can change it, we can do whatever we want.
No, I just wasn't sure, Kathy had a good idea, sawmill, we have so many sawmills
that were, you know, were in this town.
On, on signs, Hoffman's Farm East sign, sorry, put it up again.
Yeah. Wonder where that came from?
Don't they was rip off town lines?
Dress up.
What material is the sign made out of, because as I've been looking for campaign signs, they have aluminum corrugated ones, and all you have to do is do your own graphic, and they put them on there, and they seem to be lasting, put them on.
I'm just not to that.
Well, when you're asking for quotes, are you asking for painted signs?
They, I said what, you know, just with the ones that other towns have, you know, thank you for, you know, visiting Clifton, and so he has done many towns, so he knew exactly what we were looking for.
Well, DaVinci, Karen, they, they all will paint them, just like they, the, the ones that were up, and that's probably why.
They'll last.
They'll last as long as the other one did.
Yeah.
But, like, most of the sign companies now, they have the full-scale printers that print on vinyl, that you put the vinyl on the board, it's going to be a lot cheaper, it's going to last just about as long.
Vinyl's fun.
Yep.
The corrugated aluminum signs last a long time too. And, dirtcheepsigns.com, just, I.
That's worth looking into.
It is, and the online and check some, because there's.
Especially for whatever prices these are coming in, I mean, what is the price?
The picture's small, the corner says.
Dirtcheepsigns.com, there's others.
I mean, we just started, and just. This is a picture brainstorm, and if anybody has any other pictures, I mean, I don't have to go with.
We shouldn't have to spend any money.
I think the picture, I just was sure we had a picture, you know, that we were giving them, and.
I have a song, yeah, there's so many songs in town. I'm, and like I said, it's still work in progress, and there were many, and I told them that this would be, like, something that would be half budget a year, it was not going to happen right off, so I will look at it next year, so they're all sort of, yeah.
Can I ask a question? Would it be easier to get money quotes if you could decide what you wanted? Do you want the painted side, do you want a vinyl side, it, it would be, I would think, easier for Debbie to get money amount, if she knew what you wanted.
I'm guessing, I'm guessing they're probably quoting what other towns are doing.
Yeah.
So, there, if all the other towns are doing those vinyls, then that's probably what they're quoting, because she just.
Well, no, that's not what Jess just said.
I, okay.
Because, because I, I mean, I know for a fact that white sign would do a vinyl sign. They are probably not painting signs since I left.
I can imagine every town around here is all getting wooden signs that are painted though.
And they're going to, you know, it depends on whether you want it fancy, like she's talking that picture that we originally did.
Yeah.
I mean, that was quite intense and intricate, if you took that in a bladder one, you put it in a little corner and said, welcome to Clifton, established in the year, I mean, you're talking a totally different price, correct, Jess?
Yeah, what, 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 cheaper price.
Yeah.
Can I see the, the quote? They explain what the.
She, I had a different time, I did a different time that was.
This one was, yeah. Joel, if you could just specify, I guess, because you're right, I mean, we don't, we need to specify, what was the Eddington sign made out of?
That was, that was a really cheap plastic.
Okay.
And that's why.
It was metal?
I think so, I think it was a, during that ice storm we had, that it plowed the ice up into it.
Yeah, I just want to know if you know what kind of material that was going to be.
If it was metal, it wouldn't have broken like that.
Yeah, okay, so corrugated metal, is that what you said?
The plastic, corrugated plastic, I think is what that was made out of.
Well, okay, what do you, what do we, how then we want for a quote?
I want corrugated metal, that's how I was going to go for a quote.
Did you say vinyl?
A, a vinyl over metal would be excellent, and that would last a very, very long time. Vinyl over plywood would give you probably at least fifteen, twenty years.
And you could do the plywood yourself.
The MBL.
Just get the vinyl, and then buy the plywood and put it on there.
Ask them about, pick them between vinyl.
We have done a lot of work with these guys, too.
Those vinyl signs will last far longer than these.
And the ideas on pictures, just send them in, we'll put it in the newsletter, and we need some ideas. Yeah, I need, we tabled the abatements, these are the two mark recommendations, the other one, the poverty, and we just. I thought we, I thought you guys.
We did, we did sign the papers.
I got, I thought you guys did.
I don't, I don't, I don't have it, I went through every bit of my stuff, I don't have it.
I thought you guys approved Mark's, and we tabled the other one.
I don't have it, I went through all of my stuff, so I have no.
Did you say someone took it?
Well, if we all.
We don't know, but they did.
Yeah, yeah.
Using the song numbers, we'll take it, but not.
Well, maybe I did, I didn't know.
I don't just, I didn't bring my stuff with me tonight, so I might. I could have sworn that I signed one. I was crazy, that's one, like, where did they go?
Step with that and.
Is that back, is it?
No, it's not.
And this whole chapter on the deep end?
Yeah, I got that too.
Okay.
I don't think they got some.
But you guys.
I didn't get to get, I don't know.
They definitely were.
They were, bro.
It's in the earth. Sorry about that, that's on my shoulder.
Well, I think we got yakking on something else, so, is this just one or two?
It's two.
Oh, it's two here, okay, all right. Kathy, you want to start off with?
Yeah.
Move it around.
First, I just have a copy of that, thank you, Life Flight, was something I picked up.
Can I just, Laura, you just for a second, because I just need to tell you about this story, it's incredible, it's really incredible. I don't know if any of you have seen this or not, but Lifelight sent us, you guys haven't, but there was a note from the foundation, and this is very pertinent to my heart and soul. This was a Lauren Lamerson, who was five years old at the time, and it said, when Lauren Lamerson was just five years old, she was lifelighted to Maine Medical Center after she and her family were in a plane crash in Western Maine. Though she nearly drowned, she's made a full recovery and collects donations for Lifelight every year on holiday. So, this mom became a champion of Lifelight Foundation. The story was, they had gone to, I believe it was Sebeck, which is down around, is it down Portland, Cumberland, down that way someplace? It was on, Sevego maybe, yeah. They were visiting a friend of theirs who was a seaplane pilot, who had the capabilities of landing on floats or tires down, and she and her husband, and this little girl, and a little guy who was younger, were in a plane, they were going to go for a nice little joyride and land, and then have a picnic, and so she, the mom, got in the backseat, and I don't know if you've ever been in a float plane.